A break for a few minutes and we will start back up. Sarah, I believe you're on, are you still on sewer capital? Or are we moving on to distribution and collections?
Were there any other questions on sewer?
Were there any questions from council on requested capital for sewer? Okay, let's move on.
All right.
Requested capital for distribution and collections.
Okay, distribution and collection. So in this year's budget, in the water and sewer side, we have, well, part of it might be out of Duke. I know part of it's out of Deuxes County Splosts. Water and sewer pipeline of $385,000. So like for instance, the projects that Pete brought to you this year, Edge Road and the Highway 78 project. Those were not budgeted. We had budgeted the engineering in the previous year, but not the actual construction. This gives us an account to work with for those types of projects because we know they're coming. So this is $385,000 for that. The next item is service lines for $75,000. So I think Tom explained when we did the paving project that before that we had replaced some service lines and meters. So you know, you have the the main water line, but then the service lines that run towards the houses. So we've been replacing those and trying to be proactive about doing those roads before those roads are paved. So this gives them again, another pot of money to actively, proactively replace service lines in certain neighborhoods. The next item are pressure reducing valve replacements. In the past, we've budgeted about $25,000 per year for them. Turns out that is nowhere near enough money. That might cover one. So this gives them the opportunity to do four or five around the city for that.
Where are these located?
Um.
Which one are we talking about?
Pressure, pressure reducing valves.
Downtown.
Isolation valves.
Downtown.
All downtown?
I think so.
Okay. Shouldn't have gotten out of that. All right.
That was on the pressure reducing valves. Now, the isolation valves?
Same thing.
Downtown.
Are those also downtown?
Seventy-eight and sixty-one mostly.
Okay.
One, one of Jimmy's great consternations is that when he has a leak, he can't turn the water off easily. Because when we put the water lines in, we didn't put in isolation valves. And so sometimes he'll spend on a 30-minute repair, three or four hours turning the water off.
Is your mic on? Maybe pull it a little bit closer.
So it's, it's not unusual for him to have to turn off water, not just hundreds of feet away, but a mile away.
How many isolation valves are we putting in?
If we put in the cheaper valves, they're about $1,500 apiece. But if we have to put, put in a valve without turning the water off, then they're like $6,500. But his, his issue is on, on a lot of the older part of downtown, they just didn't put valves in at all. And so when he has a leak, let's say he has a leak on seventy-eight near Rocky Branch at the high school. He might have to turn all the water off from sixty-one back. Whereas you should have isolation valves, you know, every, so many manholes so that you're just cutting one little small segment of the water line off.
So is he gonna, is he gonna go?
Does he affect hundreds of customers?
And the commercial. He had one at Rocky Branch not long ago, and he thought he was gonna have to cut off that whole section of commercial.
With the high school, you know, this is back in the spring when the high, or back in the winter when the high school was still in session. I mean, you don't want to turn the water off to the high school in the middle of the day. Restrooms, right, water fountains. I mean, can't wash your hands.
Cafeteria.
Doesn't work.
So has he got a plan on locations of where he's gonna go put these things in?
I don't think so. I think he, he's got a rough idea just because of where he's had problems. Where he wants to do the valves that you can insert with the water still on. But he won't have any trouble spending however much money we budget. You know, we have a much greater need than that. We're just trying to get started.
Okay, are there any more questions?
Nope.
All right, let's move on to, I guess, a recap of all the.
Yeah, so total capital, capital for 2021 is $9.6 million. And then I just wanted to show you the sources of funds for that. So the biggest piece of the pie, or the donut I should say, is 3.5 million for Jifa projects. And then the Navy section, this year we have general fund contributing 1.8 million. Again, a million of that is butterballs. Then the two splost, you see on the right, the lighter blues, each of those are contributing 1.2 million dollars towards these projects. L-Mig is a small sliver of the pie. That was that $175,000 that we talked about. And then water and sewer is contributing 1.6 million towards capital projects. Again, that's kind of what we've been working towards with rate increases is to be able to pay for some of this. And then storm water, I don't know if we mentioned that, but that was 80,000 for storm water improvements. All right, debt service. Just wanted to kind of update you where we are this year. So you know, 2020 was where we saw our $460,000 increase in our debt service payment. But we have another slight increase in 2021, so it's a 4% increase. So last, in 2020, we're paying 735,000 in principal, whereas in 2021, it's a 855,000 dollars towards principal. But the interest is going down slightly, so that doesn't necessarily wash it out. But we're seeing a 4% increase in our bond payment again this year. So that is all the slides I have. Mayor, did you want to talk specifically? I can point things out in the book.
Okay, so we have a part two for tomorrow.
Correct.
And so one of the things that I'm, when I flipped through the, the budget, I'm not seeing, I had asked you to put in, and we talked about how you would put it in, but a full roster of employees and their information. We agreed to leave the names out.
Okay.
But I don't see it in this budget.
Okay.
Now, I don't, right now I may not have to have it in the budget, but I want you to provide me a copy of that.
All right.
Council, is there anything that you all feel like you have questions or a need for after only having one day to review this budget before we get to part two tomorrow? Okay. Tom, did you have anything else you wanted to highlight that, that council should be reviewing as preparation for tomorrow?
Have you got it printed out for tomorrow?
No, printed, no.
Can I see it?
Yeah. Do you mean to unplug?
Yeah.
There's no question that today is like a 100-feet-high overview of the budget. But the details are inside of all of these pages. And how many pages does this budget? Hundred and three, hundred and four pages? So this was by no means meant to be a comprehensive review of the budget. This is just part one, an overview. So I, I don't necessarily expect a lot of questions, but I would like to give the opportunity if anybody does want to throw anything out there.
And I do apologize for y'all not getting the books till yesterday, but we were crunching numbers till then. So I pointed out earlier, page two is the summary. And then the next section, you'll see until you get to capital where we were earlier, that whole next section is revenue. And it's by fund. So you'll see the revenues by fund. And then the capital is in the middle of the book, page 24. And then on page 29, that is where the expenses start. And so page 29 is a summary of all of that. So every department just tells you the summary and what the total change was for each department.
So are all departments on 29?
It continues on to 30, but yes.
Because it looks like it's in color on 29, but it goes to black and white on 30.
The, yeah, so the actual departments that we talk about are all on page 29. The other kind of special funds are on page 30. That's why they're in black and white.
Oh, I see. You got them highlighted, you got departments highlighted by color.
Yes.
Okay.
Sarah, on page three.
Uh huh.
You're, you're showing that this year's proposed budget is 1%. But the, the 10-month is only 26 million.
Michael, can you pull that a little bit closer?
On page three, the proposed budget is, is 1% higher than last year. But the 10-month number, 26 million, is nine million short of, of what the budget is. Are we gonna make that nine million up in, in two months? Or is it, or is, we're gonna have a lot, much larger shortfall in this $35 million budget?
Well, so general fund, part of it is, yes, we still have some revenues to receive. Like for instance, $1 million is a insurance premium tax revenue that we'll get. We'll get it at the very end of the fiscal year. We still have, you know, monthly, we have loss coming in. And some, some of our revenue is about a month in arrears, so we actually have three more, we have three more months of loss that'll be collected. So we still have revenue coming in for that. Some of the other differences are in splost. So we budgeted to use some fund balance this year, which is why we're showing a higher revenue in 2020. But we haven't, like, we haven't spent the street money yet. And that would come out of fund balance, so. That's kind of a convoluted answer, but yes, we still have revenues rolling in. But part of that difference is use of fund balance, so.
Put it around to the garage side, up closer to the garage, that'd be fine.
Any other questions?
I've got a question about the Carroll tomorrow. So we, we're only budgeting 12,500 for the final quarter.
Yes.
I guess so that, does that mean that we're anticipating not renewing the Carroll tomorrow for the rest of the year?
That's how it's budgeted, but.
That has been, that's exactly how I'm considering it right now. It has not been placed in the budget. We may need to bring it up and discuss it, but I'm not inclined to include it in the budget. If anybody else is, we can start looking at that. But that agreement ends with this next payment, with this final quarterly payment. And I've seen no proposal, no request for us to renew that.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions?
Is the, is the Carroll tomorrow, is there any significance to, are we getting any benefits from?
It's a great question, and it's why it needs to be revisited. I'd like someone to come and explain to us what we are getting for that $50,000 a year. In addition to that, our Villarica Development Authority also pays them an additional $35,000 a year. So they receive $85,000 a year from the City of Villarica. And I think that we, we need someone to come here and tell us what, what that money gets us. And nobody's asked me for that money again, so I'm not sure they even want it again.
I'm sure they'll take it if we give it to them.
That's not happening.
Are the other cities paying?
Yes, ma'am.
They're paying?
Yes, ma'am. Other cities do contribute as well. I don't know if they'll, you know, if they're gonna be renewing any agreements. I don't know what their agreements are.
Are their amounts similar to ours or higher or lower?
So I, I think I can speak for Carrollton. I believe they pay $100,000 a year, if I'm not mistaken. I do not know what the smaller cities contribute. So now that's what the City of Carrollton contributes. Their Development Authority may contribute an additional amount. I don't know. That part I don't know. I mean, it, it's worth having a discussion, but I don't see the discussion until they make a request or till someone comes to us to present the item. And as of right now, it's not included in this fiscal 2021 budget. Okay, are there any other questions?
Sarah, on page 14, it looks like the, the 2008 Carroll County Splosts is completely consumed?
That is my hope, so you know, we've been spending it this year. And there's a few more projects that they're trying to get done before the end of September. So I'm hoping it'll be fully expended. If not, then I'll have to bring a budget amendment for, and we'll have to put it in that use of fund balance and then show the expenditure as well.
I'm sorry, that was page 14?
Yes.
And that was for which?
It's the 2008 Splosts, the old Splosts.
For Carroll County?
Yes.
150,000 or something.
Right.
In it right now?
Yeah. Trying to use that up.
Okay, if there are no more questions.
I'm gonna go if there's no more questions.
Well, then go.
All right. So I've been meeting with recreation weekly, trying to wrap my head around what we're doing, what we're not doing, what we need. So one of the things that I've learned is that we have been in the practice of allowing the football teams to use the baseball fields for practice sod. So they've been practicing in the outfield, which is not good for the baseball fields. So I reached out to the only contact that I have with Ingles and finally got a call from an attorney that represents them. And I have asked him if they would be open to a land lease of the Ingles site. So if you're familiar with that, it's 50 acres that sits on 61 in front of the V-Plex. And what I have proposed to him would be a five-year land lease where we go in and put in gravel parking lots and practice fields. The double, triple benefit for us, one is it would make July 3rd parking more effective because we'd actually have some gravel parking out there instead of just a big, open, sloppy field. And two, we'd not only get football practice fields out of it, but in the spring, a football field is a soccer field. So in the, in the fall, we wouldn't, it wouldn't really benefit us in the soccer program, but in the, I mean, in the fall. But in the spring, we could actually practice soccer out there too, which is an issue. Another thing that I've done is I've had my first meeting with Jody, who is the head of the soccer association. So if you're familiar with how our rec runs, all the sports and all the classes and all the rentals go through our admin staff and gold dust. But the soccer program, even though they don't handle the money, they have a board and they run the soccer program. And in the course of that conversation, I asked Jody, how many fields do you need for your current participation? And he said, I need twice what we have. So if you're familiar with Fullerville, that's about a 20-acre site. He needs twice that right now. And his participation pre-COVID was about 400. I think his peak was about 500. So we've seen a real drop in our numbers this fall, which I don't think is really indicative of the program or interest in the program. But at some point, we need to think about what additional fields would look like. Another consideration is when the north bypass is constructed, I would like to see that entire area develop commercially as opposed to industrial. And one of the things that I think would enhance that would be a road that ran from the north bypass to Fullerville. And if we do that, then that Fullerville complex could develop commercially. And if that's the case, then we would need to build all the fields someplace. So that's one thing that I'm looking at. That kind of property doesn't readily exist in Villarica. You can't just go find a 50 or 60-acre, flat, dry, without rock site anymore in Villarica, but that's sort of where we're headed. Another issue that has come up, as I've talked to folks, has come up in my weekly meetings with Wesley. So I've been meeting with Wesley from Pine Mountain for about, I want to say this month, it's been two years. And when I first started meeting with him, like, it seems like everybody else that I talked to, I had this big unmet demand for maintenance that had developed over years. And so we initially threw a bunch of people at it. And then at some point in the two years, we moved the Douglas inmate crew out there full-time every day. So at the beginning, I had the grounds out there some, and Nick out there some, and Jeremy's guys out there some, and the inmates out there some. And then eventually I just moved the inmates out there altogether. Well, we've, we've lost them, but during those two years, we've cleaned up a lot of that park. We had an employee there who was a hoarder. And we have taken off literally roll-off after roll-off after roll-off full of junk that had been stored out there for 10 years or longer. So that's pretty much gone. So now we're working on a combination of improving the buildings that are out there with building additional facilities. So here's the policy question that I think y'all need to consider. Pine Mountain is a complete cash pit. Complete cash pit. We are spending a half a million dollars out there or more. And we're probably pulling in a little bit more than 100,000 in revenue. The good, the good and the bad of that is that's money that I don't, I don't feel like we really have to spend at this point in our, you know, renovation. But it is the closest thing to a tourist attraction that we have. So if you are involved in our weekly meetings with Sharon, who is basically a marketing person for the city, she is constantly putting the name of Villarica out to people all over the state through publications, through all kind of social media, through the other regional information centers. But she's done a great job. It's just that what she has to promote is really limited. Because at the end of the day, Pine Mountain is not a place that you would visit that involves a hotel stay. It's more of a day trip. And it's more importantly geared toward elementary school field trips and homeschool groups. Even though people do go out there and walk, and they walk their dog. And there's some other sort of more adult uses. The primary use is kids. And they're not gonna go downtown and eat primarily. They're gonna bring their lunch if they eat there at all. They're not gonna stay in a hotel. They're not, you know, immediately gonna buy a house here and move here. I mean, it's, so when you think about what Pine Mountain is contributing versus what it's costing, we at least need to have the conversation and say, yeah, we're okay with that. You know, that we want that to be part of our brand and part of our image and part of our community. And we're willing to pay like 400 grand. That's basically what the library cost us, which in most communities is operated by the county. So we've got two $400,000 cash drains that are, in my mind, discretionary. All right, then in addition to that, you've got a rec department that is now really impaired because of COVID. So we just finished registration Friday. And the numbers are down drastically. So when I met with Jody, he was hoping that his numbers were gonna fall no more than from 400 to 250. But his numbers are down so bad that he has extended his registration another week. So this is the third week of extended registration, but parents are just not signing their children up.
Do we have any preliminaries on his, on the soccer program?
How many?
From the 400, you said drastically?
Yeah, he was hoping for 250, but I, he's not even at 200.
Okay.
Right, so I mean, he's, he's taking, his program's taking a big hit. Which I, I'm not, I'm not saying that there's anything wrong with the program. It's just the environment that we're in right now. And what it's done to the department since March is it's caused us to basically re-task people in the athletics program because we refunded everything. So we didn't do any spring sports. We gave everybody's money back, and it was a lot of people. You can remember, how many checks did we sign?
It was over 700.
Yeah, so I mean, we had good participation. We wrote a lot of refund checks, gave everybody money back. And so what the athletics group has done for the last four months, five months, is cut grass. Right? That's not what we hired them to do.
So we need to make a decision about whether we close it down for the rest of the year?
So now we, so now we have Pine Mountain and the library, which is impaired because of COVID. Rec, which is impaired. We've decided to bring a new director on, right? So I think we sort of have made a decision. But there's a lot of money in that when you take those three operations. And if we don't have events, then that minimizes the productivity of Janet and Sharon and now Shannon, who's the new coordinator. So we're not doing concert. We're trying to figure out how to do Gold Rush, so we're thinking about a Friday night concert instead of Saturday night. And then we're talking about maybe not doing the parade. The concern there is the parade is sort of the, the door that gets people into the city to go to the vendors, right? Because if you've ever watched the flow, when the parade's over, people walk over the railroad track at South Carroll and go visit the vendors. Well, if we don't have the parade, are people gonna come to the festival? Why, why do they come to the festival? Do they come downtown because of the vendors? And the parade is this sort of, well, if we're gonna go to the vendors, let's go to the parade? Or is it the reverse? Is it, let's go to the parade and oh, since we're here, let's go to the vendors?
What's, what's the schedule? When is it supposed to happen?
It's the second Saturday.
The 12th. Got Velcro pygmies on September 11th.
On the Friday night.
And then Saturday, the 12th, from 10 to 3-ish for Gold Rush.
Right, and we're, and we're still planning to have the, the run. So the Sriners are pushing us now for a decision. Because, you know, they're sort of doing this at the same time. You know, tell us that you're doing it and we're not sure we're coming, you know, because of COVID again, right? It just makes everything so uncertain for people to make plans and decide what to do.
So just, just to talk about that just for a minute. So I've been in discussions about that parade for the last few weeks. And I have been very reluctant to not do that parade. We, the council agreed to do the concert on September the 11th. And I have been getting probably a question every day or two about whether or not we're gonna do that parade. So I would like you all to think about that parade and do your own sort of research. I'm being told that every, everyone else around us has canceled their parades. I'm being told that every, everyone else around us has canceled their parades. I would like some input and maybe tomorrow we could discuss it when we do part two of this budget so that we can get an answer over to Main Street so they can make a decision about whether or not we're gonna have the parade. Ideally, I wanna have the parade. There's no question about it. But there are real considerations that we need to have about whether or not we do this, this parade. I think that there is a reasonable plan for the concert. And I think we will do that anyway. What, what is he doing?
He knows you're talking.
I was gonna try to talk over him, but he just laid on it. He wouldn't let off. So I do want, and, and if you have any input now, it may be a little premature, but you might wanna ask around. You might wanna do your own sort of review, but I think tomorrow we should try to have some kind of input that we can take back and, and discuss with staff. It's a, it's a valid point.
The parade route is crowded with people. And as soon as the parade is over, they either, they either go to the vendors that are in brick and mortar along Main Street to go to the restaurant because it's close to lunch and they wanna get in early. Or they go to the temporary vendors that are set up right out here in tents. So before they-
What has been the vendor participation, if you know? Do we have a number?
How many?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have twenty something already signed up.
Okay.
So the vendors wanna come. I mean, what have the vendors been doing?
Nothing.
They need money. They need pe- us to drive people to their tents or, or buildings or-
And I don't wa- I don't wanna have thirty vendors show up, have no activity, and then try to get them to come back next year.
Well, I'm concerned that without a parade, you don't have the activity. I mean, that's the reality.
Can't have the parade if you're gonna have the vendors.
I mean, I wish we could encourage social distancing and face masks, but unfortunately, that is about worth nothing. That don't mean we won't. I mean, that may well be what we do, but-
If you just encourage face masks, you know, at least they would probably come.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. That-
Well, I believe that's been one of the arguments that's been made to me, which is not only will, uh, will we have a crowd, but we may have an enormous crowd because of pent-up people. Because of people who already were gonna go to this anyway. Uh, so that's actually more of a concern, uh, in terms of if we're concerned about crowding. Um, but I have been very reluctant to, uh, to, to walk away from that and I still am. I, I, I just would like to get some input before a decision is made.
Well, we've gotta be conflicted because if we have a big event-
We're gonna be on TV?
We could be-
If we do have a big event, we got to encourage, you know, everybody to wear a face mask at least.
We would certainly do that. I mean, but I just don't know that-
I know, but-
-going to make a big difference, but we will try.
It's bound to make a difference.
May make some difference. You're right. Okay.
So comments about the, sort of just the big picture of all that, Pine Mountain, library, rec-
Recreation, yeah.
Main Street.
Some of you had to have seen some of that discussion coming simply by looking at, A, the budget. We've had some one-on-one discussions about some of it, so this is a time to talk about it. If you have, uh, comments or questions regarding Pine Mountain, the library, and the recreation department.
I just, um, in light of your conversation with Jody where he basically says that he needs twice of what he has, um, I, I would just renew my inquiry about is there any room in this budget or any appetite among the council for some sort of recreation department facilities, master plan for all of them? I know we did the one for Goldust. But, I mean, you know, we really need to understand what our needs are. So we're just not doing this piecemeal and that's just a concern of mine. And for my constituency in particular, I mean, they're, they're asking for, you know, mostly young families. They're looking for what are, what are the recreation, you know, what other recreation opportunities are there? The V Plex at Goldust, um, you know, dog parks, now soccer fields, it sounds like, you know, because Fullerville's beyond capacity, it sounds like. So, um, I know this is a recreation year in which things are looking different, but I think if you look at the trends pre-COVID, I would like to see something, some sort of, something in our budget for a recreation facilities master plan.
Well, I, I think it probably, Tom has already alluded to it. We, we are not, uh, in a position to consider doing anything drastic with recreation. Clearly, we just hired a new recreation director. But, uh, it's still worth a discussion on that, but I think more importantly, we need to be focused on Pine Mountain and, and the library. Are we committed to those two in a way that we're prepared to pay the cost? And we're looking at some four hundred thousand at the, at the Pine Mountain Gold Museum, which is largely a loss. It's just, we spend the money to keep it.
That's the net.
And that, so that's the net, uh, which is a loss, four hundred thousand. And then, uh, at, uh, the library, I mean, what is that number? That's close to a half a million, isn't it?
Close to four hundred thousand?
The point is that keeping these programs costs money. The budget is, as you can tell already, over a million dollars short. Uh, and this, have we based this on a rate yet on a mileage?
Six and a quarter is what's in the budget.
Six and a quarter. I'm still losing a million dollars, uh, in this budget.
Million five or something.
Million five. Or was it a million eight? I'm sorry. I could open my book back up, but-
One point six.
One point six.
Um, yeah, the library itself is five hundred fifty thousand and there isn't much income that offsets that.
So those two departments alone eat up a million dollars for which we have little to no revenue stream.
That's one and a half mils all by itself.
Okay.
We might have to consider a temporary shutdown.
See, the problem with doing any kind of shutdown is your only savings is off in the future because we're a, an unemployment direct reimbursor. So any unemployment money that people receive, we pay-
A hundred percent.
-back to the Department of Labor.
Plus, we have to maintain the facilities.
And we have to maintain it. So in the first year, in the first six months, you don't save anything.
So any shutdown would be a permanent shutdown. It's the only thing that makes sense.
Sense.
Yes.
Yeah. And the facilities-
We can't afford to do that.
Don't go away, right? I mean, the library's, what, three years, three and a, three and a half years old? Seventeen, somewhere?
It's about three years and a couple of months.
It's not permanent. It's not something we really wanna talk about because we, we need them, so we gotta find short-term fix.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we're looking, that's what we're looking to hear here today. Is that the answer?
Is that the policy?
We'll hear tomorrow.
Is that gonna be, well, we'll hear tomorrow, but that's, that's what we're asking here. When you consider this, is this something that, okay, we're gonna keep it, we gotta find a way to pay for it? Or is it a real open question to close either of those departments permanently?
Did we really expect the library to generate surplus funds?
They don't generate hardly any funds.
That's what I'm saying. I, I, I don't know of any library. It's a service offered to the community.
Most of them are county-operated. They're not city oper- I mean, around Georgia.
So why is our, why is ours different?
I don't know the history.
Yeah, there would be a lot of history to discuss on that. Most of us weren't here when the library was contemplated and when it was built and funded.
Okay, another related conversation. We have approached, we, the staff have approached the DDA, who is also the CBB, and asked them to voluntarily split those two organizations up. And that decision has not been made. But in most of my experience with CBBS, they are heavily hotel-oriented in terms of board representation. Ours has none because our board is the DDA who happens to also do CBB. So our board is very downtown, which it should be because it started as the DDA. If the DDA does vote to split those up, I would like to see the board of the new CBB comprised of a couple of hotel people, maybe a downtown restaurant person, but probably Wesley from Pine Mountain, who's our main draw. Um, maybe someone from Rec, if not the Rec Director. You sort of get the idea of changing the flavor of the thing some.
Not a s- exactly a citizen board?
No, this is more who, who should have input into how hotel motel money is spent. And the reason that you spend hotel motel money is to put people in hotels. That's the whole point of the hotel motel tax, is to pay for facilities and programming that puts people back in the hotel. So one of the things that we've talked about earlier is recreational tourism tournaments. Our facilities don't support that. V Plex is the closest thing to a tournament site, but the fields have not been well-maintained and they don't drain. So one of the things that you've seen us do is we took advantage of the shutdown by painting and carpeting City Hall and working on the electrical and then painting and carpeting in here. If we have another season where we don't play, we should take advantage of that and redo those fields. But we're talking about twenty-five thousand dollars a field to re-grade it and sod it, and there's nine of them. So that's a big-ticket fix. But it would get us to a place where we could more actively do that. We could have another long conversation about travel ball and how that fits in and how do you balance Rec with tournaments and all that stuff too. But I just want you to be thinking about where does Rec fit in to your vision for Villa Rica? I feel like where we're located, that recreation is one of the most important things we do. And that we should do what we can to have the best recreational program possible. Because I think that attracts and retains young families, which I think is to our best interest. But we have a lot of work to do to do that. The other piece of that that we have talked about, but not really put any specific plans together on is the gym. So we, we leased the gym from the school system at the high, at the elementary school, but they want that space and they want to demo that building. And they're willing to wait for us to, you know, get our stuff together so that we can survive that. So I've looked at a plan to build a two-court facility add-on at Goldust. So just go out the back of the building and build a building with two more courts in it. That would give us the capacity for our program. Because that is one of the healthiest programs we have. We just don't have the facility to, to handle all the participants. If we do that and we do the laser grading at the V Plex where the, all those fields are playable, I would convert Goldust to little guy soccer. And take baseball out of Goldust, put it all at the V Plex. And then what you would have at Goldust is a playground, a splash pad, and little guy soccer, which to me fits together. And then at the V Plex, we'd have one football field and then baseball and do, and do baseball right.
If we move Villa Rica baseball to the V Plex, would we still have room for travel ball and tournaments and stuff like that, or?
No, I think we still have to build more fields.
Recreation is critical to bringing young families with children into this area.
And keeping.
You know, my wife and I are empty nesters. We don't necessarily use the recreation department. But my children live in Reed, my grandchildren live in Reed Plantation and they use it. So if you wanna bring young families in, you have to have recreation.
Good recreation.
And then if you wanna bring tourism recreation, you gotta even have better recreation. You gotta have better fields. It'd be a destination for those travel ball teams and tournaments and-
So one of the sites that we've talked about, even though it was only briefly, is the, the sixty whatever acres that wrap the V Plex. That owner is talking to a residential developer right now. So if we're interested in that site, then, you know, you're talking about three-quarters of a million dollars probably. But we would need to do that soon, sooner than later. I don't see any indication that the Ingalls site is available. But I'm hoping this inquiry into the land lease and doing like some practice fields will give me some feedback that will say to me, yeah, yeah, we're not really planning on doing anything here, so you can, you can lease it. Because I think that's what they're gonna tell me.
And then turn it into something else later down the road?
I don't know that they have plans to-
No, us-
To use it for anything ever.
But if we've got leased five years down the road, it may be something different.
Yeah.
If, if we're serious about expanding the V Plex, we got to buy the land. We got to have the land.
Right. So what are our other options? What, what else makes us a tourist destination?
What can we add to Pine Mountain Gold Museum to generate more money? What, what kinds of activities in, in our namesake kind of fields would people pay to come and see and do?
Uh, you know, Wesley has great ideas, but what it's gonna do is make us more of what we are. If we do a petting zoo, kids, right? If we do more educational space back where the, where the mine is, homeschool groups, field trips. I mean, you know what I'm saying?
I thought at one point you mentioned wedding.
Yep, yep. He could have small events there, but nothing, nothing large. So one thing that we could talk about is a water park. But again, that feels like a day trip to me. Even if you're, you know, forty miles away, you could, you could drive here, spend the day at a water park and go back. So what I just saw in Covington when we visited last week is that they have collaborated with neighboring cities and have become the destination, sort of by virtue of their size and their proximity to twenty. And, and they are the town where people stay for four, five, six nights. And they go to Madison and they go to Monroe and they spend the day in Covington. But then they go to Atlanta and they, you know, go to the aquarium or whatever. But Covington has promoted themselves as sort of the base of operations. And I don't, I don't really see that model working here because I don't see Carrollton as a tourist destination or Bremen or Douglasville. You know what I'm saying? I don't see, I don't see a collaboration where that works for us. And our hotel properties don't support that anyway. So I wish I had like some, some, you know, idea or solution to this. But, but I think we can at least articulate where we are and and start thinking about what we wanna become. But a tourist location just doesn't feel like where we're headed.
But the sports center thing does, so-
We could do that.
And since we got some time now, since our activities are down, now's the time to get it done.
Yeah, it's just those capital dollars are competing with a lot of other capital. dollars. So buying land and building fields is going to compete with Butterballs, it's going to compete with whatever we do with Avante, it's going to compete with redoing downtown, you know, we're going to have to spend money to do Mirror Lake Connector, we're going to have to spend money on the utilities to do the North Bypass, we got to spend money on Sewer to do Alamoore, I mean-
Alamoore's still rolling?
Mm-hmm. Yep, I got an email from him today, yep, they're still doing engineering.
Well, I, for one, appreciate the discussion. I've always said that if a program is worth having, it's worth having fully, and the recreation department really has not, I think it has so much more potential than we have seen in a while, I'm looking forward to seeing that come back, but I get a lot of calls about travel ball and about more ball fields, and more calls than anything about additional gym facilities. I've even talked to the school systems about working some kind of a share program, and they're open to that kind of thing, but ultimately, that is a Band-Aid that really just doesn't accomplish anything. So if we're serious about keeping these programs, we're going to have to be serious about prioritizing some funding over there. I think it was Tom who said, three years ago during the interview, if I want to know what you care about, I just pick up this book, and I know what you care about in your city, and I think that that is ever more true with what we're going through now, because we're having to look at a very micro level at what we're doing in this city and make some decisions about, are we doing the right things? Are we going to continue to do these things? Or are we going to cut them off? And if that's the decision, then we have to live with it. But it doesn't feel to me that that is an appropriate decision with regard to recreation.
All right, another question that we can knock around is about starter homes. So in my three years, I've watched primarily the completion of failed neighborhoods.
That's right.
Right? So Dogwood Trace, Reed Plantation, Augusta Woods, South Woods, Brandywine, they were all conceived prior to the recession, failed in the recession.
Liberty Point.
Liberty Point, the Falls, and starting in seventeen and more so in eighteen, they started coming back. So we still have Twin Oaks, Summer Gate, and Charleston Place, North Woods, Watermist and South Harbor, and then a couple of vacant pieces, so between Carrington and Hawthorne and Connors Road at Nally. So that's seven that I can think of off the top of my head where we're probably going to get some more residential. But my question to you is, is we, what I think we should do now is we should pursue builders who are going to build what we want to build, because up to now, we've not really had a say. You know, the Platts were already approved, the infrastructure was in place, and builders had just been building to match whatever was already there, right? But we're going to soon be in a situation where builders are looking for new subdivisions. And I don't know that we want to pursue more starter homes.
I'd say we don't. I think we've got plenty.
I second that.
So one of the things that the market is going to do, that's going to make the homes more expensive, is the fact that they're going to, a new development is going to be built from scratch at today's dollars. So instead of like somebody going into Brandywine and buying developed lots way below market, we're going to have a developer come in, and they're going to pay forty or fifty thousand dollars a lot, the builder is, for a developed lot in a new subdivision, because that construction of that new lot is going to be expensive. Well, that's going to make the house price higher all by itself, so I think that may actually help us some. Alamoore may help us some, because I think, because of the timing of that, it's going to be all-new construction and not inexpensive, because of the rock and the water and all the things, the topo things that they're going to deal with in Alamoore. I think that if council can talk about that subject and agree, that would help the staff going forward, not just on Bobby's side of plan review and permitting and all that, but on the economic development side, because I think we should proactively go after the best builders that we have experience with, and in effect, try to minimize the involvement of the guys that we don't, whatever, like, that we've had negative circumstance with.
Well, I mean, we just approved the new zoning ordinance, which, I mean, part of my comments on that zoning ordinance were to increase architectural standards for homes, require amenity areas, all these things that would promote a higher-quality development beyond what we traditionally have in Villa Rica. So I, from my perspective, I don't think we would have went through those efforts if we didn't already believe in that, from my view.
All right, so what's about to be built? Apartments and townhomes, that's the two things I see coming, right? Walton is going to do the Housing Authority, Arbor Valley's going to do Clegg Horn, the piece behind the high school is higher-end but still apartments, the Connors Road piece between Carrington and Hawthorne is going to be townhome or condo. The piece beside where I live between Liberty Chevrolet and Hickory Level, Hickory Falls, townhomes, see what I'm saying? I mean, that feels like a pattern to me.
Well-
That that's either what the market is saying that people won't, or that's the perception of developers and builders about Villa Rica.
I see those two things a little differently, though. I think density is very good for us. I think density helps in a big, big way-
Right.
-for what we need to do, which is part of growing out of. When you talk about new developments, though, new subdivisions, I am absolutely on board with a higher-end product or no product at all. I think we have enough of the starter homes, because I've always said Villa Rica is a prime location. It's taken some time for us to become a sort of visible to people who might come out and spend that kind of money, but that's, when we talk about approving new subdivisions, that's what I'm looking at there. When we talk about density, though, I'm going to be all for that, because they do very good for us, they're good for the city. And all of the places you're talking about already are zoned for what they want to do there. Out there behind Home Depot with the townhomes, they're already done. Everything else that you talked about is something that we've already agreed to with regard to that density. So I wouldn't want it to sound in any way like we're poo-pooing that, because we're not, but we are aiming for a higher standard for new subdivision development. Does anybody else have any comments?
What is it that's going in next to the Tanner Urgent Care Place?
That's a scene.
Assistant living, building.
Who's building it?
Tanner.
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 I think we've had a very productive discussion today, we've covered a lot of territory that we've been talking about probably for six or eight weeks about bringing to council. Does anyone have any questions before we close out? Because we're going to have part two tomorrow, is it at noon?
Yes.
Will it be at?
Uncorked.
It'll be at uncorked, and then we'll come up here for the meeting. Okay. All right, any other questions?
None.
Sarah, do you have anything to add?
No.
Tom, anything else? Alyssa, ladies? Okay, if there are no more questions from council, then I will adjourn this meeting, and we will meet back tomorrow at noon.
Thank you.